I have a motion to excuse Mr. Taylor due to work requirements. Second?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
All right, I believe. We have a minute.
They're in the, they were in the package that was being mailed to us.
Okay, there it is. Yep, you are correct. So everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the last regular meeting?
Just two seconds.
Second that. Uh, Mr. Dunphy? Yes, Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth? Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, is there any, um, citizens' comments? Anybody got anything to say? All right, thank you. Business and organizational comments? Uh, committee discussions, I know we need to have a police and fire committee meeting that is pending. Uh, we're waiting on some other entities to get a decision made on a couple of things. Come get back at us.
So can I add to that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, we actually met with folks from Boto today and they called a special council meeting on Thursday night. They approached us, interested in us providing potential police services for them over there. And, uh, the conversation today went really well between, uh, all of us. So they're going back to have their council meeting to see what the, to see if they have consensus over there. And then they're also going to come up with the number, offer what they can afford. So.
So just please for, please in the form?
Just please for now.
Yep.
Meaning, I don't know if they'll want it later, but.
For a wrap with places. Yeah, it would be a very good discussion. So I know that is pending right now. Uh, I know we've had one scheduled earlier for this week. We've got that on hold. Mr. Taylor can't make it due to work and like I said, we're waiting on that. All of our results are, so. Anybody else got anything?
Yes, actually, we need to have a planning and development committee meeting to talk about several proposed, um, matters that would be coordinated. So Carl and Justin, what works for you?
Yeah, next Monday.
Would next Monday work?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you do six?
Yeah.
Okay, let's say six, next Monday, the eighteenth.
Six and eighteen. Okay, um. Departmental updates? Do we have anything? Mr. Barber? No?
What do I, go ahead.
Mr. Barber, or Chief Barber? Go ahead, sir.
All right, um, as most of you know, our first item point fifty-one has been out of service for a while. It was out of service during the last meeting. Um, it's back in service now, had a bunch of repairs, maintenance taken care of through commons. It was all covered in warranty, so there's no, there's no bill there for that one. Um, twenty fifty-five, the second out truck, uh, just went through another series of repairs to the tune of around five thousand one hundred twenty-nine dollars. Uh, this is all just basic maintenance on the trucks, uh, you know, they're getting old. So, um, we're working on, I'm still working on right now, trying to get some numbers and some stuff together for an apparatus replacement schedule that I will propose to the city manager and council by later time, once I get all that stuff together. The nine eleven service we have this year, it went very well for those that attended. Uh, we mark, this year marked twenty years. Uh, we had a guest speaker, the Ohio Fire Marshal Kevin Reardon came down. He spoke with the community and some of the crew members and participated in the service. And we also included a bagpipe in our service now and will continue that tradition yearly now. I am currently gathering quotes, competitive quotes for the purchase of a fire hose. Uh, for those of you that remember the, this year's FEMA grant, uh, we were awarded for all new attack and supply fire hose for the city. So I'm working on getting some competitive quotes before I actually make place at order. Uh, for those that don't know, the grant award, this is a smaller grant, they call it a micro grant. This was forty thousand five hundred fourteen dollars. So the city's five percent matching on that is roughly two thousand twenty-five dollars. Um, is that coming out of my budget? Water prevention week this year is actually the third to the ninth. We did not participate in any public education at the schools last week because we were out doing census work, so we actually, in between fire and EMS calls, we were actually knocking on doors, uh, trying to get numbers together. We will schedule that, uh, we'll try to get that scheduled this week so we can get back into schools. But every year we try to educate as many students as we can at the elementary school, usually through sixth grade. Uh, we're still working on numbers for EMS transport, I know we talked about some stuff like that. So I'm still working on some numbers and some timelines, some stuff to approach with. And we will be starting plans and getting information out for the toy giveaway this year for Christmas and for the basket program. And we had, we changed our venue last year, for those that remember. The basket program is a joint program, uh, with us and York Council, Voluntar Fire Department that started actually years ago, uh, to raid Mike's creative bills. We changed that venue to our station, to our location because of COVID and some other issues that came up last year. And that venue will now stay here. We had participation from other city employees. We were very excited to be able to participate, that I've never participated before. So I'll make sure that, uh, that happens here from now on. And for those that don't know, uh, this year's trick or treat is going to take place on Saturday, the thirtieth, and by trick or treat. And we'll have, we'll be out with our trucks and apparatus like we usually are during trick or treat.
Did you get your replacement safety gear ordered?
Yes, the gear's ordered and we're, uh, working on some boots and helmets right now.
Okay. I remember, I remember that and I knew there was a price change. I thought I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, we had, uh, they were kind of having a price change in October, so we got that order placed and we're working on some sizing for boots right now, so everything's in process.
All right. Oh, great. Is that it? That's it. Anybody have any questions for Chief Barber?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Chief. All right, do we have, uh, Mr. Cohen up tonight, too? Okay, we're, we're yours.
So as everybody's seen, we got the ceiling done for this year. I think it turned out amazing, looks really good, really changed the look of the square and everything up through there. We gotta get ahold of the guy to paint the lines on the square, I'll call him in the morning. Turned out great, can't wait till next year to put some more down and actually figured out how to do it and make it cost effective to where we can move along pretty quick with it. Tomorrow, our new meter project's starting, swapping out meters. So just so folks at home, they're listening, there will be small interruptions in the water, in your water service when the meters are getting changed.
Say that again, there will be an interruption in water service when meters are getting changed tomorrow.
The water will be in your house, yes. So it'll be less than fifteen minutes.
Not just tomorrow, it's.
It is for the next four months. This project goes for the next four months. So when your water does go off and they change out your meter, it'll be off for roughly up to fifteen minutes. Um, once it's off, when it comes back on, if you have an outside spigot, it's best to turn that spigot on for five to ten minutes and let any sediment in the lines clear out. If you don't have an outside spigot, the bathroom, don't do it through any sinks because they have screens in them and the screens will plug up. They're gonna start digging in Boto next week, next Monday. Everything, the meter pits, everything's getting changed in Boto. Brought up to date where ours are up to date, Boto's isn't.
Boto's are manual read, aren't they?
They are all manual read right now. Once this new project's done, everything will be read through towers. It'll read back to City Hall, I believe it's two to three times a day. You know, make it a lot easier to, to catch a leak. And people, there will be a website where people can log on and they can actually look at their usage as it comes in. So that'll make a little difference, make it a little bit easier on Taylor's office. We're gonna start trying to patch again this week. We've got roughly a month left of them making the hot patch. So we're gonna attempt to tackle that Wednesday, start that Wednesday. I know we still got quite a few out there that didn't, haven't been done yet. Um, we're hoping to have a leaf schedule out here within the next two weeks. Leaf pickup schedule, we did get the leaf machine fixed, because everybody remembers towards the end of the year it worked out last year. We've been having some issues at the lift station at VFW. And it's got to do with things that shouldn't be in the sewer system coming off the hill.
Are you talking about pillows and blankets?
Blankets and.
Pillows.
Causing quite a bit of overtime on the weekends.
That would be from the correctional facilities.
Causing quite a bit of overtime on the weekends, come in here. Yesterday, we had six and a half hours overtime coming in here because a pillow, it went through their sewer system. And it gets down here to the lift station and gets in the pump and just binds it up and then stops.
Is there something we can do to prevent that?
They, they have a, a filter up there, a bar filter.
Meaning it's just, it's just like rebar, right? A grate.
We go for that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, is there some way we can reduce costs on that?
So the ordinance you guys have already given us, we can. Um, the plan of attack that we're gonna do is Jason and I are gonna go to all three correctional facilities later this week and look at their, because as an industrial user, they're required to have a, a pre-cleaning device, if you will, basically it's the grates, like you said, it just gets the big stuff, so it doesn't go down the sewer. We're gonna check those. Uh, I really am curious to see the, uh, regional, um, all the purge rumor stuff, so I just wanna go see with my own eyes, um, if they already have the equipment in place. Yes, we can charge them and, um, there was something else I was gonna tell you about that too, as far as, uh, them having the proper equipment, but the new guy, Sean, has been with us, what, two months, a month and a half?
Yeah.
And he's already had four overflows from this pump station right here that overflows in that manhole right there.
Since, since Phil left, there's, there's.
Which was seven fifteen.
It overflows out of this manhole out here by the bike.
Off of this lift station?
From this lift station here, it backs it up over here, this is the first place for it to overflow. Yesterday, they took six loads out with the back truck, when they were trying to keep up with it, while they were pulling the pump.
So what area they all fitted to this lift station?
What areas speed into it?
Yeah.
Everything out two seventy-eight.
The last thing is we're also in coordination with the EPA, so depending on what we find this week, um, and if we can't find a solution that's plausible, then we've already made contact with EPA folks and we will utilize their power to help.
They're aware of all, we're in some instances in the last month and a half.
I'm sure they need to be. That one picture I saw, I, I mean, it kinda looked like an orange jumpsuit.
Yeah, I just, when I first looked at the one picture, I thought it was an animal. I was like, what in the world?
Looked like an orange jumpsuit.
There's other ones where you can see the stuffing from a pillow.
Yeah.
Wrapped up in the turtleneck on the front.
Okay. What else you got? What about Mill Street? Mill Street.
Haven't got an update yet on when asphalt's gonna happen. Waiting for PLZ to let us know when that's gonna happen. When Mill Street does go, Pullman Avenue's going also.
Gotcha. Nice, so it'll all be done.
And, and for those on St. John's Street, yeah, we will be hitting a layer of asphalt on that before winter. It's just gonna be an intermediate.
Kinda like what happened to Chestnut last year.
Yes, because somewhat, yeah. Columbia Gas is coming in next year.
Right.
They got a project going on up there. Can't see asphalt buried for them to dig out.
Destroy it.
A piece of it. But they will, Columbia Gas is very good about, their backfill, they, they use concrete, so it's a great base. So once they fix it, we've only got the intermediate base in there. So then we'll be able to come in over top of it and put the top, top code on and it'll be, here we go.
Anybody got anything for Mr. Cohen? Thank you, Jason, appreciate it.
I had one other thing that forgot to mention. Um, we're down three part-time firefighters there now, two of them have left, getting more money. And that one is left because it's in the middle of medic class right now and it's, I see years worth of class. It's just way too much. So we, for those that don't know, our test is extended to December second, so we're still re-advertising right now, but we're down three part-timers.
Thank you, Chief. All right, should we have, okay, so we are on to.
You have a piece of his, uh.
We told.
Taylor?
Yeah.
Yeah, another department update.
Well, sure, go ahead there, Taylor.
Yeah, I'm kinda busy this week.
Yeah. And we've been really busy.
Yes.
Okay, um, I have a copy of this letter, I was gonna give it to you, Justin, so you could submit it into the record. And at the end, I would ask, uh, council to vote on, to approve or unapprove this report just because of the statutory nature of this undertaking. But I'll just quickly go through it, it just, I just have them, uh, thanks for having me, city council, and good evening. Um, this letter and report, as well as my stack of documents over there, uh, about eight or nine inches tall, uh, are being submitted to you, as well as the Secretary of State tomorrow, about the re-numeration of Nelsonville residents. Uh, the following summarizes the last couple of weeks. Sensual passage of resolution two-two-four-nine on September twenty-seventh. Uh, my office, as the state puts it, caused, has caused a re-numeration of the residents of Nelsonville and, uh, with the five enumerators, uh, who I'll just, actually I'll name them later, as well as many, many, many volunteers, we've worked diligently to find and count everybody. I appointed those five enumerators, uh, on October first. Um, starting on the third, they began meeting ten AM daily here at City Hall to convene and then canvass neighborhoods throughout the city, as well as talk to business owners, landowners, uh, schools, organizations, institutions, everybody. During this time, a broad, uh, public awareness campaign was also abducted, or conducted while canvassing, enumerators noted that many residents knew why we were at their door, uh, before we even introduced ourselves. Uh, every street in the city was canvassed and as a lot of folks can attest to, many were canvassed more than once. Um, to me, all of this showcases not only just, not just the exceptional success of the public awareness campaign, but the community engagement and buy-in. Uh, also on October fourth, a group of volunteers held a free community dinner for all residents to come and eat and be counted. Um, there was food donated from the Chamber of Commerce, Nelsonville Rotary, Texas Roadhouse. We had volunteers like Mr. Booth, Mr. Dotson, Angie Booth, um, who I didn't say, Mallory Swaim, Becky Barber, Police and Fire Departments, many others. Um, before the deadline, today at midday, all enumerators returned their book, attested to their oaths and affidavits as required by code. With the books and lists in hand, I completed my account with the required material, checked for duplicates, et cetera. After reviewing the material to the best of my ability, uh, it is my privilege to inform council that we found five thousand three hundred seventy-three correctly placed names and addresses throughout the submitted documents. It's my conclusion that this finding is more than sufficient to maintain city status. And I also believe we have formally and wholly fulfilled all requirements to challenge the original count under the Ohio Revise Code. And then, uh, I would like to name just a whole bunch of names, because I wanna thank them all, so if you would bear with me. I wanna thank the Chamber of Commerce, Nelsonville Rotary, Texas Roadhouse, the Nelsonville Community, the residents, the businesses, the rental community, Betty Jo Parsley, employees in my office, the city manager, Police and Fire and Utility Departments, including Chief Barber, Chief Fitch, Mr. Cohen, Athens County Treasurer Rick Wasserman, Rick Wasserman for helping out, Commissioner Chris Meele for helping with some lists, Prosecutor Blackburn, Nelsonville City Schools, Nelsonville York City Schools, excuse me, Hocking College and many others. And I want to offer a very special thank you to Mallory Swaim, Kevin Dotson, Becky Barber, Justin Booth and Cory Taylor for stepping up as enumerators and organizers, as well as Dan Pfeifer, who got the word out to everybody who had ears, who had ears or eyes to hear or listen.
Yes.
And then I just wanted to end with my statement, I respectfully submit that the city of Nelsonville is and should remain a city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very much.
Do we need to accept that? You need to motion that, or do you need to send Justin?
I mean, I'd appreciate it if you guys had a vote to accept it. We'll just have a motion to accept the count taken by the enumerators that's submitted by Mr. Sappington.
I'll second that.
Second it then.
Yep.
All right, uh, Ms. Grant? Mr. Booth, yes? Ms. Jones?
Yes.
And Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
And Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
All right, Scott Knight, whoever else, the chiefs, whoever wants to go, we're going up tomorrow, Secretary of State. Send his hands down. Or then. Take like wagon train up there.
We are gonna take a couple of trucks, anybody that doesn't wanna go, like you said, uh, myself, Department heads, and we're gonna go up there, this is a big deal, so we'll.
Harry, can you take the, uh, take the engine up front? From like.
We're taking the bomb truck.
There you go.
The bomb truck, yes.
Why don't you take the water truck? Red rocket.
I did have, uh, I lost a seat now.
Yeah, there you go. All right, well, thank you to everyone for their very hard work on this and making this happen. Without all the volunteers, without the community, it wouldn't have happened, so. Thank you to all the city workers that did this, and the Mr. Scott Frank and Mr. Taylor Sappington for getting them organized. Okay, so for all of it out there, we are going to remain a city, not a village. Thank you. Firing Secretary.
Right, your trust, right?
Okay. All right. Send good vibes. Send good vibes. Okay, so we are off to second readings. Um, ordinance seventy-two dash twenty-one.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask a question to the law director for the county?
Yes.
I was doing some research today. Um, Ohio Revise Code, section seven oh five point one-five, powers of legislative authority. It talks about, um, reading ordinances and if such as long as we have a printed copy, we only have to read the title. We don't have to read the entire document. I would like to propose that moving forward, we only read the titles, since we all have printed copies in front of us.
Yes.
I'll second that one.
I'll second, I'll, yeah, I'll say, I'll. I'm down with that.
I'll vote all five myself.
All right, so just, we just need to read ordinance seventy-two dash twenty-one and then the, the voltage part, right?
Yes, just the voltage.
Right.
If you want me to read?
I'll read it.
Okay.
Okay, all right, ordinance seventy-two twenty-one. Do we have to introduce?
No, this is second reading, okay.
Ordinance seventy-two twenty-one appropriations ordinance to appropriate from the unappropriated balance to the following, sum of fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. It says fourteen thousand, correct? So it should be fifteen five. From unappropriated balance to number six hundred fund capital improvements, line item six hundred dash six hundred dash six seven five nine six fund, fire department equipment. All right.
Motion to adopt.
I'll second that. Okay, uh, Mr. Booth, yes? Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Okay. And ordinance seventy-eight dash twenty-one for second reading. The ordinance setting the authorized staff in the police department, declaring, well, this is going to be an emergency, it's not second reading, so.
Suspended rule is correct. Whatever it is.
It's our emergency, but it's not suspension of the rule.
It's no emergency.
So emergency, it'll go in the second season.
Okay, so I agree. All right, so the ordinance setting the authorized staff in the police department. Declaring.
And declaring emergency.
Yes.
It's not suspension, it's just an emergency.
That's why I'm not counseling her. All right. Motion to adopt?
Actually, can I ask a question?
Sure.
And Chief Fitch is in here, but I lose the city manager to be able to answer this. Um, the way that this ordinance reads, just so I understand, um, so allowing for one full-time sergeant and it's like separate line item, one full-time K nine officer. The K nine officer therefore could never be the sergeant?
No.
Okay.
So that, he explained that, he can go into great detail, but, um, just like if we ever created a detective position, it would be detective position, not sergeant detective.
They also couldn't be, okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, ma'am. Anyone else have any questions? Are you?
Do we have to read that? The title?
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Jones? Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Grant?
No.
And Mr. Booth, yes. All right. All right, now we're on to first readings. First reading, all right, um, ordinance eighty-one dash twenty-one, can someone introduce it, please? Thank you. An ordinance authorizing city managers Scott Frank to sell the city's dump truck to the Athens County Engineers Office without the advertising and bidding process pursuant to ORC seven thirty-five dot zero fifty-three at a price of thirty-seven thousand dollars and declaring an emergency. Okay, this is, this has been some understated discussion.
Motion to suspend?
Motion to suspend? I'll second, I'll second that. Okay, uh, Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy? Yes. Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth, yes? Ms. Jones?
Yeah.
Push to adopt.
I'll protect it.
I think I start with that one. Mr. Dunphy, yes? Uh, Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth, yes? Ms. Jones?
Yeah.
I'll vote yes as well.
And Mr. Sherman, yes. I just listened. Hey, it's my first day on the job. All right, moving onward to eight, ordinance eighty-two dash twenty-one, can someone introduce it, please?
All right, Mr..
Thank you. An ordinance authorizing city managers Scott Frank to accept the Ohio Department of Transportation Small City Program Grants Award. All right, any, uh, any council discussion on this matter?
Is this for the paving?
This is the paving for Canal Street from six ninety-one to the roundabout and from Sonic up over the hill to the overpass. It won't, um, it's a fiscal year twenty-five project, which is summer of twenty-four. The total project's a little over three million, so this is a little over half of it that it covers. We have a couple avenues before we get to twenty-four to cover the rest of that. So this is just the first piece of the puzzle. It is possible that if another ODI program gets bumped or for whatever reason, it could get moved up earlier, but right now that's the tentative date, summer twenty-four.
Since this is so far out, why are we having to do this under suppression? It does it.
Yes, that's good.
The, so, you don't need to, meaning, they, they originally said, um, they needed it back before the beginning of, by the beginning of November. However, they said that quick email will suffice instead of an actual ordinance. So the ordinance is cleaner, but we don't need to suspend because I've already taken care of the email side of it. So unless you guys don't want to make an email back as well, I don't know.
No, we do, but we still have another meeting in October.
Absolutely.
Right?
Right, so you won't have to even, you would have had the thirty days after that. So without that, it doesn't matter, just, it can go the slow road.
Okay.
Okay, that's probably first reading then.
Sure.
Okay.
Oh, it's not, not in the hole, but at the end of the three ordinance.
All right, so we're gonna move on to ordinance eighty-three dash twenty-one, can someone introduce it? All right, thank you. An ordinance authorizing city manager Scott Frank to accept the EV charging project proposal enter into a contract for purchase and installation of two level-three electric vehicle charging stations for the city of Nelsonville. Okay, this is on first reading. All right.
Well, that one, um, so, that one.
Well, that one, um, so, that one is on first reading, however, the quicker we get going, the better, so, I don't know if you, uh, saw the email I sent, uh, we have a couple options with this, if we want to go with the two chargers, we're looking at twenty thou, or twenty-six thousand dollars out of pocket to the city. If you want to go with one, you'll very likely, uh, get it underneath the hundred, or the hundred thousand, uh, peak, but it'll also be close, uh, they didn't quote it that way. It does need to be passed quickly, because the, uh, the money that fell out of the sky has to be executed and complete by the end of January. So I need to give these guys, uh, yes, we'll move forward quickly.
When did you send that email on? So I don't have it.
It's been a week, so I think.
Yeah, it's over.
We need the ordinance to be in effect by January, but you need to give them a yes or a no.
To do the application now.
I think we should go with it, we know with two.
Okay.
I agree, twenty-six, twenty-six thousand, we take that as capital.
I agree. Sounds like a great idea.
One more only costs twenty-six thousand.
Yeah, one more only costs twenty-six thousand dollars, that's a no brainer.
It, I agree. Just to elaborate a little bit more, it, uh, we are an E V desert here, so there's no charging.
Right, there's no.
People will be able to come here with one power, have their car filled back up, so.
Those are level-three stations, that's the fastest one.
Absolutely.
Still with a later date, we can decide, or whoever can decide what to charge, right? We don't have to make that decision.
Correct.
Absolutely correct. This is just a purchase.
So, by January, wouldn't there be expected to be, and then we can set those, you guys can set those rates, so.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Unless I missed it, would it be appropriate to send a committee about where those funds would come from over the one fifty? Or do you guys want to have the discussion now?
The one fifty comes from.
The twenty-six thousand, over the thirty-five, over the one fifty.
So the other piece, um, I think twenty-six thousand. We're gonna, I mean, I don't know that, I guess the biggest answer I need now is can we go forward, but the other piece that you're asking for is, we have to pay the full amount upfront, and then they reimburse us, just like a lot of our other grants.
So how long?
It's A P, so it shouldn't be near as long as.
I mean, like, one month, ten months?
Oh, within a couple months, absolutely. So, the, uh, E P A is currently taking four months, and that's going to be faster than E P A.
Plus the additional on top, right? Isn't there?
Sorry?
Isn't there some amount not covered by A P?
Twenty-six, twenty-six thousand.
Okay, so that part wouldn't be.
So they're gonna pay a hundred fifty back, so we're gonna pay.
Hundred seventy-six.
We're gonna pay a hundred seventy-six out of pocket, we're gonna get a hundred fifty back, so we're gonna have a twenty-six thousand, to have two.
And it will be this year, out of this budget?
It will be this year, out of this year. So where this, this way, like, comes from?
I'm sorry?
Where did this way, like, from us come from? What?
You can, uh, capital.
Figure that out, probably, finance.
Yeah, okay. Let's figure out what's cause to be different.
When actually would it, once they execute this, when, will they start?
So we will, the guys and myself will complete the application tomorrow or Wednesday, and we'll get it into A P. Also, they will set aside parts, right now, they have the parts, so the biggest delay, the rush for this is the actual equipment suppliers, right now, there's only one supplier that has equipment in stock, everybody else has a six to nine monthly time behind that, so that's, that's the reason for the rush, plus being installed by January. So, the biggest thing is, if I can go forward, throw out the paperwork, if there's going to be any objection, and then we can do the ordinances as their, you know, normal route. So if there's no objection to that, I mean, leave it as is.
They'll make a motion to.
Motion to allow Scott Frank to, to, um, to fill out the application.
While the ordinance is in truth.
Yeah, to fill out the application, while they, while they.
A point of clarification, just because I was kind of confused, because we feel we were, we read the ordinance, we were discussing, we discussed about whether or not we wanted to do this under suspension of the rule, and now we have another motion.
We're allowing, we're allowing.
I guess, I guess I'm just saying, like, shouldn't we do one thing at a time?
And it says second reading to be October twenty-third.
Okay, yeah, but then we talked about that he needed to do it sooner.
So if you just want to do it under emergency and pass it, we need to.
We did now?
Yes.
You're putting the language in.
Yeah. Motion. We're gonna do it under emergency.
But we need not want to amend.
Amend the ordinance to add the clause under emergency.
Under suspension.
And under suspension of the rules, and declaring an emergency.
I revoke my early motion.
Sorry, Justin, did you get all that? Yeah, I'm sorry.
I really hope you keep getting all this.
It is. You can review it. So, an emotion on the floor is to amend the ordinance and add declaring an emergency under suspension of the rules.
I'll second that.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
And Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth, yes. Ms. Jones?
Yeah.
All right, motion to suspend.
Second.
All right, Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth, yes. Ms. Jones?
Yeah.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Motion to adopt?
I'll second that. All right, uh, Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth, yes. Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
There you go.
All right, Scott, file away. Call if it just lets us know when you want to do, call the finance meeting.
Yes, got something.
Okay, uh, we're moving on to ordinance eighty-four dash twenty-one, can someone introduce it, please?
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Ordinance accepting a two hundred dollar and zero cents donation from the V F W, put as three four six seven auxiliary for the K-9 fund, and declaring an emergency. All right, basically, this is a donation from the V F W. Any questions on this matter, any discussion?
I made one change. Oh, no, they go to two.
We're good, all right. Uh, motion to, uh, suspend?
Second.
All right, Mr. Booth, yes. Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Uh, Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth, yes. All right. Ordinance eighty-five dash twenty-one, can someone introduce it, please? Introduce. Thank you. An ordinance accepting a one thousand dollar and zero cents donation from the V F W, three four six seven, for K-9 fund, and declaring an emergency. All right, any council discussion on this? All right. Motion to suspend?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth, yes. Ms. Jones?
Yeah.
All right. Motion to adopt?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth, yes. Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Ordinance eighty-six dash twenty-one, can someone introduce it, please?
Guns.
An ordinance authorizing the Nelsonville City Police Department to sell T-shirts for a K-9 fund fundraiser, and declaring it an emergency. All right, any council discussion on this matter?
Who actually is responsible for selling the T-shirts, collecting the money, getting the money to Taylor?
Good question. That's a great question.
And all of that.
So far, it's all the P D, so Chris has, um, Jessica has some at the window that she can also collect and turn in, now that you guys are voting on it, we'll be able to turn directly into the auditor. And then, I believe, all the officers have access, but I'm not a hundred percent sure, so I don't know if it's just Jessica and Chris, or if it's the other officers as well.
Mr. Taylor, do you have any, um?
Advice on that?
Like advice or issues about, like, multitude of people maybe selling T-shirts and collecting money, or anything?
Um, advice.
Concerns, thoughts?
Mr. Auditor, how would you like the money collected?
Well, I mean, it's gonna end up in my office, right? Um, you know, I, I support it, and anything those guys do, or the city manager too, the, um, maybe a little more planning ahead of time next time, would help us answer it before tonight, but, I mean, I think it's already beginning, so, you know, we'll try to do our best to, to look at it, and I don't, I don't want anyone to have any impression there's, right, you know, there's no question about money or anything like that, but maybe just planning out the next one, a little better, we'll. Yeah.
Okay.
We're trying to be tactful.
Where does the?
This is, this is a great night, guys, I'm gonna get to it, it's okay.
Where did the outlaying of cash to purchase the T-shirts come from? How do they buy the T-shirts?
They're collecting the money for.
Or are they pre-selling T-shirts?
They're pre-selling.
They're pre-selling T-shirts, okay, that's what I was trying to figure out, okay.
All right. Any other questions? All right, uh, motion to suspend?
I'll second that.
Thank you, sir. Uh, let's go with Ms. Grant.
Yes.
Mr. Booth, yes. Ms., uh, Jones?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Motion to adopt?
Second that. Uh, Mr. Booth, yes. Ms. Jones?
Yeah.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
All right.
Quick thank you to Ms. Jones for providing that under the Ohio Revise Code. That is, that's really nice. Okay, um, let's, uh, we're on to the city manager's report, Scott, take it away.
Sure, so the first thing I have, um, I got an email mid-last week, as you know, we were out, uh, collecting and amassing. So I was a little bit behind the power curve there, Appalachian, or sorry, Foundation for Appalachia, Ohio, has a grant that's due tomorrow, it is up to ten thousand dollars, and, um, so very rapidly, we put together a couple quotes to replace four dugouts at, uh, the old park, Holy Field. So, um, with, what are we, a motion, or?
A motion to do it, yeah.
If you're okay with supplying for that grant, and then if we do get that grant, it would be four, all chain link fence, um, uh, dugouts even the top, and it'll have a shade over it as well for the sun, and then that'll also be a new concrete slab with a new bench on the other side.
Is there any matching to that thing?
It's just ten thousand total.
Is it that to the Nelsonville Community Fund?
Uh, Appalachian.
It's at the Appalachian, County of Appalachia, Ohio, but isn't it the Nelsonville Community Fund?
It is, absolutely.
Which is money from when they sold the school building, where they took that money there.
They were very generous earlier this year, those at Rocky and Bear, they paid for the.
Hey, one, one thing, we, um, maybe add to that a little bit, and get the lights down there fixed that are on the baseball fields, because I know when they were trying to double up some games last year, it was, yeah, it's getting dark quick.
Um, we're already slightly over ten thousand with just those four, but, that doesn't mean we can't, that should be a relatively, so when we present the budget to you guys, you'll see that we put some money in for park repairs, and that should be relatively inexpensive. I think we can get very nice LEDs for pennies on the dollar.
I got my lift and, um, do I need my lift with the basket?
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, so a motion to allow Scott to apply for this grant? Right?
Appalachian.
Appalachian.
Yeah, Nelsonville Community.
Nelsonville Community Grant? What do you?
Second.
Uh, Ms. Jones?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Sherman? Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Okay, what else you got?
All right, great. Um, thank you for that, I think the, that'll be a great upgrade, a lot of those are the leaning tower P's, if you looked at them lately. The, uh, I just want to say and recognize again, the auditor, he ran that operation, and it went pretty darn smooth with all those people involved, and, uh, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have the good news if it wasn't for that. The city workers also helped, um, they were actually enthusiastic about helping, which, um, you know, I was really excited for that, to see that come around and the attitudes change, so, um, thank you to all the city workers that were out there. And then, um, as mentioned earlier, we're going to Columbus tomorrow, the department heads, any of you are welcome to ride along, we do have extra seats. Uh, let's see, so, I just need clarification on the police staffing, um, so, it was four to one for the emergency, so should I counsel mayor's court for the next month while it matures, or is Jessica good to go full-time? I think the easiest way to ask.
That's a tricky question.
Probably doesn't have to sit for thirty days.
How many cases we have for Wednesday?
Well, we canceled, well, she.
We canceled last week.
We canceled last week, and she hasn't, uh, she hasn't started messing with it yet.
It's fine, if you do it for November, we'll stack them up, good, or, or the end of, the week of October twenty-fifth. Or, or the end of, the week of October twenty-fifth?
There you go.
Yeah, that would do it.
So that's, um.
If she's not ready, that's fine.
Well, yeah, I just need to win to put her into that position, so, because she's part-time now, but that would make her full-time.
Well, let's get her going to achieve that, like, two-week notice to get going to that. Takes a lot of work.
Taylor, you good with that? Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention.
So it's gonna take thirty days to mature, that means it wouldn't be good until November eleven.
November tenth, right?
Well, yeah, I think I'd be up a few days early, but that would be our first mayor's court in November.
I just didn't know when I could move her to full-time, that's all.
Is everybody okay with November tenth? I think that's, that's in.
I, I hear what you're saying, but I think what Scott's saying is she needs to be full-time before she has her first mayor's court.
Because she's gotta get everything.
She has to get ready, so.
So that would be the last to the twenty-fourth in November.
This is Thanksgiving week, which is probably not a good time.
Yeah. Um, well, you know, you never can tell who's gonna sell that change.
When we pass that, uh, without declaring.
Takes thirty days.
On second reading, without declaring an emergency, it takes thirty days.
Correct.
Sure.
You, could you, I mean, just offer a solution, could you guys set a special mayor's court date in November before Thanksgiving and just push everything to that day?
I was gonna say, but also couldn't she just, I know it'd be hard, but like, start using some of her part-time hours to get some of this rolling, like, knowing that she's moving in, but not asking her to work extra, but just saying she has that job over there, use some of those hours that she's already working to start getting this going.
And she's gonna have about fifty to sixty people, I would imagine. Mayor's court, of that, thirty will show up, or twenty-five, something like that.
I'm just saying, like, if you need to, like, couldn't we flex her time so that she could do mayor's court in the interim until November eleventh or whatever?
We can come up with something. I, I see what you're saying, you know, getting her, I mean, she should be able to hit the ground running, I would think, by the tenth, when we make her full-time, um, if she does a little here, a little there, uh, because she's worked in there before, um, with the bailiff before, so she's pretty familiar already, and, uh, I, I, I agree with you on that, so we can work something out.
That's what I think, like, we can just, like, work with, she's fit to flex her time and get that going, so that we can start November.
Right.
Having mayor's court that first weekend in November, and I'm putting.
That's a good idea. So should we say then the seventeenth? Because the tenth, well, we can do it the tenth, right? That would be her first full day.
Yeah, November tenth then.
And that's a white day, it's a Wednesday?
Yep, perfect.
November tenth it is.
And so announce to everybody, no mayor's court this week?
Right.
Okay.
So November tenth will be the next mayor's court.
Alright. Just want to be a bit.
Yeah.
Be a long one.
I'm gonna come over and watch that.
Go be long.
Um, it goes really quick.
Oh, yeah.
I've never been to mayor's court, so I don't know. We've got our family's mayor's court in the world.
Thank you all for the E V, I think it's really gonna take Nelsonville to the next level. Um, I know I previously discussed with you that it would go right beside the Dew House, it's gonna be close to there, it's just gonna be up Columbus Street a little bit more towards Jefferson, so it's gonna be pretty close to where Dr. Young is, uh, refurbishing, um.
Johnny Hartley's old property.
Johnny Hartley's old property.
Just back off, it's right there, it's the one brick building, you got the Dew House, and one right there.
Yes.
Right there, so it won't be on the corner, it'll be actually parking lot.
Yeah, before the alley, though, right?
Yes, absolutely, the way we have the alleys pull up in, it's like the street party.
You're gonna pull right there and be, and there you go.
And the reason was for the, uh, four-eighty location, the, the electric pole that has proper power on it, so that reduced the price significantly, literally just by moving back a hundred feet.
So it's right there.
Now, would any signs up like, uh, sort of like a handicap sign, that, you know, charge station only, or?
So we can put up, what, so we'll paint it, uh, green, so we'll do the green lines around it for E V, and then, uh, I think, what would we say, or, I was talking to the guy, roughly it'll be the same as everywhere else on the square, two, two hours max, you know, um, that gives them time if they're getting lunch, they don't have to rush back after an hour, so that would be my current, but we can, that's all up for discussion.
Well, I mean, you know, just because, you know, you don't want somebody parking there, and then something's like, oh crap, do you want to put the charge station?
Absolutely. So it'll be monitored to a degree as far as, you know, it's not gonna sit there all day. Very much.
But here's a question, are all E Vs, they all have the charging port on the same side of the car?
So I asked that, and.
Kind of like Chevy Volt are on the driver's side.
I asked that question to him, he said the.
It won't be a problem.
He said the cord.
The cord's long enough.
And it's, it's like a, a, a fuel pump, the cord pulls out, it retracts back, you know.
So it'll go across the front of the car.
So he showed us where to set them, how to space them apart for two cars, where it